Put it off because the employee that's getting the presentation is sick with the flu and at home watching us, but we'll put that off to January. So we'll open the meeting and start off with pledge allegiance and invocation if everyone would stand.
Pledge of allegiance is made by the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this day. Please watch over us tonight as we make decisions for the county and help us all to make the best decision for the people. Please watch over everyone here tonight as they leave and go home with this foggy and bad weather. Please keep them safe and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I want to welcome everyone here and recall the meeting to order and do the roll call. And from a visual, we can state that all six commissioners are present. The adoption of the agenda, is there any additions or deletions that the board would like to add to our agenda? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion second.
All right. Did you get that?
Mark made the motion.
Mark made a motion, Tim second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes unanimous. Under Finance, we have a request for joint funding on gang violence and a crime prosecutor from our DA. Randy, would you come up and tell us what you're working on and what you need from us, please?
Thank y'all for having me and thank y'all for having me early. I don't know if some of y'all may know, I've got to do the same presentation down in Newton County and their meeting starts at 7:00, and so appreciate y'all taking me early. And I'll keep it kind of short. I left, I sent a sort of a reasons why previously, and I know y'all probably like another PowerPoint from the DA, but sorry, I like to have those. Essentially, what we're asking for is $30,000 from each of four entities, Walton County, Newton County, Covington, Monroe. The idea behind this, and it was another DA who's down what's called the Coweta Circuit, which is LaGrange and Noonan and Carroll County, sort of those areas. LaGrange has had a lot of growth, the Kia plant went in there, and they end up having a number of growth in gun and gang crime. And the chief of police down there actually said, went to the DA and said, hey, why don't we see if the city will provide some funding to supplement some of the county funding? Because historically, the counties and the state focused on the DA's office. And so LaGrange actually agreed to that. Now, I mean, they're funding, I think the DA's office, something like $100,000 a year. I'm not asking that. But the idea behind it is to jointly have all four of those entities throw in for this current fiscal year, which for Walton, Newton, and Covington is, Monroe has a different fiscal year. But essentially, until FY23 is over, $30,000, and I'll break it down here in a second and explain what all that means. Covington has already approved it, and the idea is to focus, that prosecutor would focus on gun and gang crimes between the two counties, circuit-wide. And the reason behind that, I'll explain some of that, but especially multi-co-defendant cases. We have a case, just as an example, right now here in Walton County where eight or nine defendants are charged with armed robbery and aggravated assault. And I'll tell you, is a eight co-defendant case takes significantly more time than probably 20 single defendant cases. It is just a lot. I'll give you an example of some things. This was a case that happened here in Walton County, in the county. All those binders are just the Facebook records from the defendants, and we have to go through all of those. It's a lot. This is a picture of a multiple shootings in Monroe that are all tied together. I've kind of blacked out some of the names because a lot of those are still pending, so I'm not trying to get all that public right now. But that's just to show you how a lot of these crimes are tied together, and a lot of what happens in one jurisdiction carries over to another jurisdiction when it comes to these gun and gang crimes. And having an ADA who can focus on those is important because, I'll give you an example of one of the folders for one of our cases, that's the amount of discovery or data we have in one single case. That's 144 gigs of data for one single case. And that's just overwhelming for ADA's who are also carrying a case load of 200 cases in their courtroom. And so having someone that's not assigned to a courtroom but can go back and forth between the two counties would really help with that. And the idea of doing this circuit-wide is that guns and gangs don't stay in one county or one city. We have that eight or nine co-defendants armed robbery case, one of the defendants was actually granted a bond, and then with their ankle monitor is now charged with murder up in Barrow County. And it's all gang-related. And so we've had a number of people come down from Barrow County that are gang-related into Walton County and commit crimes here or into Gwinnett and other surrounding areas, Athens as well. The one death penalty case we have here is gang-related. It's Bounty Hunter Bloods, or who's charged in the indictment, where they executed two people and videotaped it. We have guns and shell casings that are sent off to the feds to test some of the shell casings. We have at least one incident where one gun was used in a shooting in Monroe, Walton, and Covington. The same gun was used in three different areas and three different shootings. Recently, I'd say in the last two, three months, we had a meeting, DA's office and all these other agencies, Walton Sheriff's Office, Monroe, Social Circle, Newton, Covington, Porterdale, and Oxford, to work on getting this gang tracking software that essentially would allow us to build some of these bigger cases and track the same people, same groups in all their activities. And the reason why we met together as a circuit was because JIMA with their Homeland Security Division has grants for that. And Newton County has gone ahead and voted on this and ponied up the $100,000. Now, it is a fully reimbursable grant of $100,000, but Newton County is writing the check to get this gang tracking software that my office and all the other law enforcement agencies I've listed will have access to, and will work on things like that together. And so there is some buy-in from all circuits on that. I said earlier that Covington's already approved it. This is just a copy of their resolution and the amount of $30,000. So breaking down what we're asking for, again, is $30,000 from each of the entities for this current fiscal year. That includes the cost of a vehicle of $50,000, training, equipment supplies of $8,000, and employee costs for this, for the rest of the fiscal year is basically breaks down to 61 and some change. So you round that off to about $120,000 total, which would be divided by four, be $30,000. Obviously, the idea behind this would be in future years, the employee costs would go up because we're already kind of halfway through the, you know, the year for the employee costs, but we would not have to pay for a vehicle unless on training and supplies. So it'd be $25,000 that we would address sometime down in the future. The note about the employee costs, the idea is, I've already have a number of very experienced prosecutors, some that have handled gang cases. Y'all have probably heard in the news, the Fulton DA filing some RICO charges against what's called YSL, it's the blood gang. We had in Newton County, one of those people who's named in the RICO indictments in Atlanta has actually pled guilty to gang charges in Newton County. And I'm not going to get into specifics with personnel, but I have someone in mind as far as who would fill in this position, who has ties to Walton County, has worked in Newton County, knows both counties very well, and has handled a lot of gang cases. The idea is the funding would actually not pay for her, but pay for a new ADA that's lower on the pay scale. So that saves some money because we're not having to pay her full salary, which would be probably some $25,000, $25,000, $30,000 more. And so it's just cheaper just to replace her and have the county split that replacement position. They would handle both gang and gun crimes in both counties. The idea would be I would maintain a list of everything that they handled and worked on, so I can provide that to all of the city councils or county commissions, results of the cases they're involved in, et cetera, so you understand where that money's going to and from. My thought would be to earmark that money just for these purposes, that if it's not spent, then it goes back to the county, or if it's approved, it will be rolled over to the next year. Like I said, funds will already be used for that. I already just kind of covered that. The other thing, too, is they would work with the SROs and schools, because I know there's a lot of, well, not all the schools, but some of the schools, there's some gang activity. Work with them, try to, you know, find out what's going on there, try to identify some issues early on, but also go speak to some of these schools and try to talk to these kids and try to tell them, like, you know, there's other things to do with your life. So I know we've had some cases, we've worked with the feds before, we round up and work with the feds, and then 10, 12 gang members are indicted, and then what happens is the 17, 16, 15-year-olds are trying to fill that vacuum and it's been worse almost. So I think you also have an educational standpoint from it, too, and so the ADA would also do some of that as well. Just to kind of highlight some things, as far as budget savings this year from the DA's office, I think some of y'all are aware of this, I know Commissioner, the chairman is, the county commission voted on two positions that had ARPA grant money on to fill those, or to fund those positions. If we did not get the ARPA grant, we did get the ARPA grant renewed. So we have a whole nother calendar year, even though we budgeted for two of those positions, ARPA money's going to pay for those for all of 2023. So we have some savings there. In addition to that is the county and all the cities aren't going to have to come out for any money whatsoever for this gang tracking software, which, as I said, costs circuit-wide $100,000. And so we've done a lot of things, trying to do some grants and things like that. I know, just to point that out, but if y'all have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any of them. But like I said, Covington's already said yes to this. I go to Newton as soon as I'm done here for their meeting, then start till 7:00. And then Monroe, I think it's Tuesday of next week is when their meeting is, and I'm going to Monroe to ask the same thing. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Is any questions from the board for Randy? If not, I entertain a motion from the board in regards to the request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve it?
Second.
We have a second, and this will be subject to all four participating, correct?
Correct. And that's what, I believe that's how Covington worded it as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous.
Thank you. I'm not trying to be rude, but I got to run to Covington, so thank you all.
All right, thank you. Okay, Planning Commission recommendations. Asharna, will you come up? We only have two tonight.
Yes. Okay, the first one is approval with conditions. The case number is Z22090001, rezoned 92.012 acres from A1 to R1 OSC. The applicant and owner is Reliant Homes, Georgia LLC. Property is located at Broadnecks Mill Road and Marcy Camp Road. This is in District 1. This is going to be, the applicant's asking for the R1 OSC for a 68-lot subdivision. There was opposition. Their main concerns included increased traffic noise, overcrowding schools, and the entrance as shown on the preliminary plat would interfere with the houses across the road. After the meeting, the developer met with the residents over there, and they agreed to add a deed restriction in their covenants that no more than 20% of the homes and the subdivision can be rented at any one time, and that all of the leases should, would be for 12-month terms. The landscape buffer and trees will be shown. This is going to be worded maybe a little different from what y'all see, but the clouded areas on the revised plat, which are outside of the public right-of-way, and we, as the department, will help them determine where those need to be. And then they did move the location of the driveway to be parallel to where the church is, so that it wouldn't affect any of the residents in Sevier Lakes. And upon final determination of the subdivision entrance, we will address possibility of needed condition of additional screening and a turn lane or whatever else is needed.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on this proposal, and is the applicant here? And if he can come up and tell us what we got going.
My name's Ned Butler, representing Reliant Homes. We are requesting an R1 OSC zoning for a 68-lot subdivision on a 92-acre tract located at Broadnecks Mill and Marcy Camp. This property is located in a suburban area as notated in the recently approved land comprehensive plan, and R1 zoning is part of that character district. We are not asking for any variances from the zoning code or development regulations in this, and the 68 lots as well below what we could have asked for under this zoning request. We will gate this subdivision, and we did move the entrance to the top of the hill. It did two things, it kept headlights from shining in the back of somebody's yard where it'll come out, will be more into the parking lot of the church, and it also improved the site distance for residents in leaving our subdivision because it moved it to the top of the hill where they can see further down towards Youth Monroe Road. We will, I think there were house plans maybe included in your package, but we are looking at the Fields at Alcovee Mountain-type product. Those are homes ranging from 1,950 square feet to 2,600 square feet, three to five We, as Ms. Parker said, agreed after meeting with some of the neighbors across the street that didn't want to look at the backs of houses where there wasn't sufficient trees along the public right-of-way. We would plant landscape buffers to screen the back of those houses along the public right-of-way, and they also had concerns about it becoming a build-to-rent neighborhood, and we don't do those, so we had no problem in putting a covenant restriction in there in the declaration of covenants that can be managed by the HOA. We wanted to make that a zoning condition as well, so when it came to be recorded to the final plat and the county reviewed those covenants, the county had something to make sure that it was in there and became a deed restriction and could be enforced. And then we also added the 12-month restriction to those leases because we didn't want there to be Airbnbs, VRBOs, and party houses in the subdivision. I will save the rest of my time for any questions and rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board, from the applicant? Okay, thank you, Ned. All right, is there anyone else here in favor of this rezon that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition to this that would like to come up and tell us why you're opposed? Okay, please. Yes? And tell us your name, your address to begin with, please.
Okay, my name is Carol Baloo, and my address is 3069 Marcy Camp Road, and it's directly across the street from the pasture. And basically, I didn't write any notes, but the last meeting that we were here, and Mr. Butler had said something that stuck with me, that I think one of the questions was posed to him, like, what, how would this enhance, this, you know, project? How would it enhance the community, or something to that effect? And he answered that it would provide more homes for people to live that grew up in this community, like he did. And my daughter, you know, is probably about his age, she's 42, and she's been raised here also. But I got to thinking about that, and so I looked online, and there is a subdivision, it's not Reliant, but there's a subdivision that's being built, a pretty big one, on, it's a tenth of a mile off the road of Claw Brewer in 81, and I mapped it from there, I clocked it to where this subdivision would be, and it was 2.8 miles. And then from this subdivision to the, I think it's called the Reserve at Flat Creek or something like that, on Nunley Farms, it's another 2.9 miles from this subdivision, and that one's already built.
And that one's next door to me.
Yeah.
And it's sold out.
It's sold out. But, and then there's another one, I think that they're either in the process of building or going to build off of 138, I believe, and then the one that he said at the Fields at Alcovee. All of these are within a probably 10-mile radius of this property, and I think with that, and the area is congested. I mean, regardless of what people think, it is. I mean, we've been there 50 years, and it's a congested area. And I just think the more, you know, homes that are being built, I'm not against building homes, but there's other builders that are building communities, and Walton County, I mean, is a big county, and I'm just saying, you know, spread the love out somewhere else. That's my position, so.
Well, I appreciate your position, and it's noted.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else here in opposition would like to please come up? If not, I'll give the applicant a chance to do a rebuttal if he so chooses. You're good? I have a question before I close the public meeting, somebody may want to comment on it. You know, the county has no way to check and see what percentage of homes are rented or not rented in a subdivision sub. This is going to be done by the HOA that's established and never be asked of the county to, okay?
Yes.
Because we're not going to get into monitoring that.
Yes.
All right? If there's no other comments, I'll close the public hearing on this request and ask the board what's its wishes.
Chairman, I'd like to motion that the board approve as adopted by the Planning Commission.
Okay. And we have a motion.
They revised that site plan, so.
Are you going to include that in your motion?
The amended conditions.
Correct, amended conditions, correct.
Are we on the same page?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes unanimous.
Let the record show I abstain from that vote.
I'm sorry.
Let the record show I abstain from that vote.
Okay. It didn't pass unanimous. We have one abstention, Tim Shellnut, Commissioner Shellnut, excuse me. Okay, the 5.2.
Okay. All right, this is approval of case Z2210002. This is 3.79 acres. It's zoned A1, they want to rezone to R1 to create one additional 1.2-acre buildable lot. The applicant and owner is Mary Alexandra, Alexander. The property is located at 2057 Bomack Court, and this is in District 2. And as I stated, they just want to cut it in half. If you'll see across the street there, it's been done one time before, but that's what they want to do, is rezone this so that they can split off one additional lot. It's done right here.
Okay. Is the applicant here? I'll open a public hearing, and come tell us what you want to do. If not, it's been made by the Planning Commission. Are you the applicant, please?
We are just planning to build a house there.
And just want to cut off a lot, split the lot in half and build a house?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Thank you, ma'am. All right, is anyone here in opposition to them splitting this lot in half? If not, I will close the public hearing and ask the board what's its wishes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezon.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No abstentions? Passes unanimous. Okay, Planning and Development, we have an annexation by the city of Loganville.
Yes, sir, there are three annexations, and each one of them is a 100% annexation. There's two on 81, Highway 81, and then one on Highway 78. If you want me to, I can bring, I know y'all got a picture of it, I can bring it up on the map.
I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion with the board approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the annexations.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Okay, administrative consent agenda. There's nine items on it. Are there any questions? Some of it's right-of-way, some of it's contracts, grants, minutes of previous meeting. If you don't have any questions, entertain a motion to approve the administrative consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, I'm going to take over on the human resources. Melissa's out with the flu, and we have Andrea here if there are some questions. I started looking at another pay raise for the employees in July of this year because of the inflationary factor that the whole country's dealing with. And finally, we got Condry to make a recommendation, and they've made a recommendation to all their clients that we do across-the-board pay raises of 6%. And then there's a tier raise in there for department heads. And I've met with department heads, we've looked at our budget, we found a little over $1 million in savings to apply toward this pay raise in the existing budget, and we are earning well over $1,008,000 in additional interest due to us investing in U.S. Treasuries. So we can do this pay raise that I'm recommending without a meal rate increase to the general public or property owners. I think it's highly needed, and as chairman, I'd like to recommend this, but I'd like to answer any questions from any board members on this. We are up to, it was 83, I don't know how many vacant positions we have countywide today.
Eighty.
Eighty. It was just earlier this spring, we had, we were alarmed at 50. The private sector is taking some of our employees. I think this is a good message to all the employees. Attaboy, you've been good to the county, the county needs to take care of you. And I, we're closed out the year last year, the strongest the county's been, and we can do this, we can handle this financially, no more than a bump in the road. But I'm here to answer questions, so is Andrea, and we have Milton from Finance here. So ask away, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
The amount of openings that we have, is that strictly full-time openings that we have, or does that include part-time and temporary?
That does not include part-time and temporary.
Okay, so that's strictly full-time employees?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How much is it going to cost, Mr. Chairman? You said $1 million has been found, how much total cost?
The, there were two numbers given to me, and Milton, you can correct me. It was 1.8 million for the existing employees. I had them go back and figure the vacant jobs because we will advertise those with a 6% increase and the benefits also, and it's gone up to 2.8 million if we include all the vacant jobs. We've come up with $1 million through attrition in the existing budget, and that's, what, seven months left in that budget? So that's equal to 2 million if you're looking at it on an annual basis. The U.S. Treasuries that we, Milton and I redone, John did the report, is $1,731,000 more interest than we would have gotten leaving it in Georgia One Fund. That number is now larger than that because we've invested other funds from county accounts in the highest-yielding, safe investments we can do, rather than sitting on our tails, just letting it sit there and draw a small amount of interest. Also, we put back, I think, what was the preliminary number in the new budget that raised us from 42 million to almost 50? We're at 49 million in our general fund. These vacant positions that we are funding in our budget, hoping they can hire if we get through the end of the budget, then that money goes back into the general fund. That beefs up. That beefs up our bond rating. That gives us money, like when a fire station burns down, we don't have to go get a loan to build a 3 million fire station. It gives us stability within the government. So, any other questions on?
These positions, the 80 positions, I'm assuming a large percentage of those probably are entry-level positions. Is a 6% increase really going to help us to fill those, if there are entry-level positions? Is that really going to help us to fill those positions, or are we just throwing money at a problem that's not going to solve itself?
Any employees want to, I mean, employee heads want to answer that? It will definitely help with the Sheriff's Department where we have.
It will help us, definitely. Here's an opportunity that we have. We could hire people wanting to flee from that and care, but they just can't afford to take that to, take that coming to work for us. They want to come to work for us, but they just can't afford to with our current salary.
And.
I heard about 80 vacancies. Sheriff's Office has had 43. We're over half of that number.
And have been since I've been here. You've had the highest, hardest hiring rate out there. And we will still continue to lose some employees to the private sector. The private sector can afford to pay more than the government sector. But guaranteeing that it'll fix a problem? No. It'll help with a problem, yes. But as far as fixing it, we don't know what next month's going to bring us less next year as far as this inflationary. I know a gallon of milk has doubled in the last year. Gallon gasoline's doubled. Eggs is two and a half times more than they were a year ago. There's no guarantees that no matter what we do, it'll fix something, I'm afraid.
Mr. Chairman, you guys are other departments. I probably got me to mine, but that was procedure.
That might be best.
Yeah, okay. To answer that question from a department head's perspective, will it fix it? No. But will it make it more appealing to people who are looking for a steady job that don't want to go to work in retail or in fast food? Some of those people are making what my 911 dispatchers are making. My 911 dispatchers answer the phone and say, Walton County 911, what is your emergency? And you have somebody scream that somebody just got shot, or their son's choking, or their wife's having a heart attack, and my dispatchers are getting paid less than somebody that's flipping burgers at McDonald's or turning chicken at Chick-fil-A. There's not a compensation that's going to be enough for public safety of the things that we have to do, but there's no way that a 6% raise can't help. Because when people look at our salary range and they look at what they can do, I lost an employee less than six months ago that had been with me right at a year, and our jobs are difficult, and most of y'all understand that it's difficult, but it takes a special person to sit and listen to somebody screaming that somebody's dying and be able to get them help and keep rolling. She had a knack for this job and got a call from a company that is here in Walton County that offered her $10 an hour more than what we're paying. We can't compete with that. I know you can't raise my dispatcher's salary by $10 an hour for every person. But she gets to sit at home and work on my computer, and she doesn't have to worry about anybody's dying or threat of dying from sitting behind her computer working for this company.
Public safety is, I know EMS, sheriff, of course, the jail, which is part of sheriff, and 911 is a large part of. And I plan to circle back with them with some strategies after the first year, but I feel like this is needed now just as a cost of living. I mean, we know inflation's more than 6% at present time, and there's no signs it's going to recede anytime soon.
And one other point, along with the sheriff, he was saying that half of those vacancies are within his department, a little more than half of those vacancies. I have just hired two new people, but I had 10 vacancies out of 24 dispatchers. So we were working at half-staff with everybody pulling overtime and everybody, including myself and our assistant director. We weren't sitting behind our desks at that time. We were on those consoles, taking those calls, and trying to help our folks not to be even more overwhelmed with the lack of help. So would a 6% increase help? Yes. And as I spoke to several of the commissioners today and left a couple of messages, I am not opposed to taking my raise and giving it back as long as my folks can get a raise because these people need it. These people are struggling with rent going from $800 a few years ago to $1,600 a month. Our raises, our salaries have not increased to double what their rent is. So anything that this board can do to help our employees is going to be appreciated across the board. May it be forgotten in a year? Yes, and I had that discussion with somebody today. People don't have long-term memory when it comes to what they need and what they want, but this is something I think that will help meet the basic needs of our employees with our county, and that's just a department head's position.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from any of the board?
I'm probably just dumb enough to throw this out, but I mean, I'm good with a 6% raise. Regardless if you're in the public sector or the government, your people's what makes you. But every time I look at where the vacancies are at, I think sooner or later we need to look at where the needs at, and maybe they need to be a more of a raise to get applicants in those areas. If some of these areas, we got 80 people applying for one job, it sounds like may have paid pretty good. And then you got positions that you have one person apply, or nobody applies. We need to take a different looks in there later at it and find out where the needs at.
I agree with Commissioner Banks. I think that'd be a good idea.
Repeat that, Mark, please.
Would I repeat that?
It's essentially looking at a second step, correct? At reevaluating some of the pay for some of the positions based on the need?
Based on the need rather than?
Based on the need. And I'm not opposed to doing that, too. In other words, I know right now the 6% will basically cover their cost of living increase.
And I have no problem.
And I've already told public safety, I want to circle back. Public safety is where we have the most vacancies, whether it's 911, EMS, and definitely sheriffs. And we need to really analyze and look at our competition and what's being offered and get caught up with the times, more so. But that would be in addition to this, and we will have coming up in two and a half, three years, staffing a new jail problem, too. So, but I'd like to take the opportunity to make a motion to approve this recommendation of Condry, a 6% pay raise with the tier raises for the recommended department heads, a one to two-tier raise, and let HR be in charge of who gets what on that based on years of service and whatever. But be across-the-board, 6% pay raise, part-time, full-time, all employees, not elected, unfortunately, Joe. We don't control elected employees' salaries.
I favor one, but if you, I don't give one, but if I pick it, I would rather.
I understand. But I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
Question. You said applies across the board, so I don't want to sing anybody out, but our county manager came on board. Does he, does this apply to him as well, or does he, is he under contract?
He's under contract, but he's receiving the same impact from the environment in our community, and I was going to include every county employee. Even though he's under contract, it would be basically a 6% raise for the county manager, too.
And this is paid out of, this is going to be paid out of general fund, or how's, I mean, what kind of budget amendment has got to be made to cover this?
We have the funds. We'll have to do a budget amendment for the additional pay, but the funds are there for it. It's no different than when we agreed to pay $3,000 more for a dump truck that was supposed to cost $250,000 and ends up costing $280,000. We have to amend the budget, that other $30,000, but the funds are there to do it. Other questions before I call a vote? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No. Is that Bo Warren?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have one. It passes. Thank you all. Okay, now the county managers report an update.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to keep mine fairly brief tonight. Just wanted to make the announcement and remind everybody about a previous discussion, but on about mid-January, we're going to need to close the convenience site located behind the Good Hope Fire Station. That's going to become a construction zone, and the way that was lined out and laid out, you had to drive through what would now be the construction zone to get to the convenience station. I've coordinated with the mayor of Good Hope. They do not have an alternative location. So what we're going to do is we're going to temporarily close that site, sign it, encouraging people to go to other convenience sites, and we're going to reassign employees. Though we will not be a reduction in force, we'll just expand some hours to accommodate the additional volume at other sites, but we'll be making that announcement as we move forward. Just on a very positive note, we're going to wrap up the year with bringing in over $45 million in grants to Walton County. Very large number and the largest in the county's history. Pending a later approval, we will have successfully negotiated the local option sales tax, and that is a change from a 65% for the county, 35% for the cities, to a 70% to the county and 30% to the cities, and that will conclude the lost negotiations, and it won't have to be done for another 10 years. And finally, the last thing is that per our audit, moving forward, once again, another record of largest fund balance in Walton County's history will be concluding 2022 and moving into 2023. So with all that good news, and I'll just say a thank you on behalf of all the employees of Walton County for your recognition of their service to the community and your actions tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
John, on the pending approval tonight, the 70, 30, that would take place January 1? Is that when that starts?
I believe so, yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
We had discussed a couple, three months back, I can't remember when it was. The concept of hiring a full-time county manager was to make my position chairman part-time and lower the salary and do away with the vehicle that's guaranteed in our enabling legislation. We pull the different counties around that have our population and have part-time chairs and full-time manager, and the salaries of those positions, the highest was $29,000, lowest was 18,000, I believe. And for our legislators to entertain this, and the election's two years out for this position, this will be in two years, I'd like for this board to recommend that we not only change the chairman's position in two years when a new chairman's elected or I run again, which I hadn't decided yet, to a part-time position. It's recommended do away with the vehicle. They can use their own vehicle and get reimbursed for mileage, and the salary be $30,000 a year. And change the authority of the chairman on purchasing, which right now is $5,000 as part of the enabling legislation. We're constantly, I'm constantly having to call commissioners and get approval for things that's over $5,000, and it's recommended by the auditors, the accountants, that we could go to $25,000. It'd make the chairman's job easier on approving purchases on that. So I'd like to, for us to entertain a motion to pass this on our level, to submit it to our legislative representative, Bruce Williamson, and have counsel draw up the new language so that the legislature can adopt this.
Mr. Chairman, this change would take place January 1st of '25, correct?
That's correct, whatever the new term is, yes. So anyone declaring to run will know what they're running for. And since I'm the one recommending a pay cut from my position, I'll make the motion to, because we're paying, I believe we're paying John $180. My salary presently is $99,000, and supposed to get a vehicle, which I haven't gotten, but I'll make a motion to recommend those changes to our legislative representative to change our enabling legislation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
We have one. Commissioner Bradford voting no. Okay, on to 9.3. Also, three months ago, we floated around Walton County has no ethics policy. The only thing that we have is state of Georgia, there are a few guidelines, and we got with ACCG and tried to come up with ethics policies for elected officials. Imagine that. Anyway, we have one that's been circulated. We're ready to present it to be adopted by the board. Does anyone have any questions or have any recommended changes of any of the language? If not, I entertain a motion to approve Walton County's ethics policy.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I didn't think anybody'd vote against an ethics policy. I'm glad to see that. Okay, the big item of the night, and I've been working on this along with your county manager. The local option sales tax, we have reached an agreement, and I'm not happy about it, and they're not happy about it. So they say that's a good agreement when both sides are not happy. But we did work through it, a great bunch of people. I was called a jackass one time. I've been called worse, but we are in an agreement, and I need this board to approve that agreement. It is 70% Walton County, 30% the cities, and they have their breakdown and have already voted on it and signed the document, and I need y'all's approval to sign the document tonight. tonight and entertain a motion to accept this, this local option sales tax percentage of 70/30.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the last agreement with, between county and cities.
We have a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Ronda, I'll sign it and give it to Milton.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave that, I know this was a tough process, tough negotiations and unpleasant conversations, but I want to recognize you and John for the work that you all did representing the county, and then also to the cities for working with us. We've got a number of good things going for us here in Walton, and we're going to continue to work together for the collective good. So it sounds like nobody got exactly what they wanted, but we're headed in the right direction. I just want to commend everybody for.
Well, we're the envy of a lot of counties that still haven't settled, and that's saying a lot for us working together. And I want to thank the four cities. We didn't always agree, won't never always agree, but we agree to disagree, and that's, that's good. So, okay, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No.
We do not. Imagine, that's great. Any announcements? Our January meeting is moved back to January the 10th, because it's right after New Year's. It would be on the 2nd. And fortunately, now it's the day after the national championship's going to be played. We can't win picking a date for a January meeting, but we're going to stick with the 10th. If you stay up too late, you still got to come to the meeting if you're on the agenda. Is there a need for executive session?
No need.
There is no need. Well, entertain a motion that we adjourn. I want to wish everyone a very happy holidays. If I, and I think we got some other comments, but before we close the meeting, all you out there, please be safe over the holidays. Enjoy the spirit of the season, and congratulations, employees. This raise will be immediate, next pay period. I've been told that will be done. And, Mr. Banks?
Mr. Chairman, you said that you'd been called worse than a jackass, and I have to agree, because I've called you worse than that.
Thank you. Thank you. I needed that. My wife will enjoy that. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Need a second.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.